Accounting manager and Lori Miller, who is the Public Works Clerk, and Dan Weitzel for kind of teaming together to figure out how we can accomplish this. It's actually a pretty big lift for staff to move from quarterly to monthly. And so because of the team effort and hard work on the part of those three, we were able to get that done. So that will start October 1st. So your November bill will be coming for October and it will be at the new rate. And so we'll try to push the word out via, you know, social media as well as, we'll put it in the Manzanita minutes, everybody gets it in their waterfall. So that's, that's the most important update I have. Other things I just wanted to note, we're now fully staffed. You'll actually be meeting one of our new staff people today later on in the agenda. But we did hire finally a part-time public works employee.
Thank you.
Also a local president who grew up here. So we're excited to have a full team. We had an all-staff meeting on Monday and for the first time since I've been here, we've have every position filled. There is a wave binding meeting on Monday. So we've been talking about that for about a year. So that kicks off on Monday. Nan Devlin from the Tillamook County Visitors Association will be hosting that. And that's from three to six PM in this building. So hopefully folks can attend. EVC and B will have a training on Underhill. We see some action on there on the 19th of this month. And the Lenida railing, which has been down and out for quite some time. We had to deal with an insurance claim and settlement. That's been addressed and the construction on that, we have a temporary railing up and that will be proceeding. On there on 19th of this month. Order. This is a trip. That was me. And then I also wanted to note that the Planning Commission meeting, which is going to happen on the 21st, not next Monday, but the Monday after. We have a proposal that's coming in for some, not necessarily pre-application, but a pre-meeting. It's actually a multi-family affordable housing project that would be in the Manzanita urban growth boundary. And so the developers have asked to come in and share their concept with the Planning Commission and get some initial feedback on the design, on what a park might be, so that they can put together an application for that. So I thought that that would be of interest to many of you. And I wanted to note that it's on Zoom and hope that you can attend. In addition, we'll actually be having a conversation with the Planning Commission too about sort of fleshing out this concept of how do we address the 40% park question. So staff has been doing some background research on that to help support the Planning Commission in that discussion. And then finally, oh yeah, just for businesses, any folks that might be out there or know folks who have businesses, we'd love to get a comprehensive list of those folks onto the Visit Manzanita website. So if you can go to our website, well, it's, it is ours, but it's managed by TCBA. It's the visitmanzanita.org and there's a form on there that folks can fill out and provide information on their businesses. Cause we'd love to be able to help sort of get the word out on Manzanita local businesses. With that, I'll return the floor to you.
I have a couple of questions. The city hall was going, the sale of the old city hall building was going to close on August 7?
Yes. So last special session, the city council extended.
Extended that.
By two weeks.
Right.
So we're on track.
We are on track. Okay. And also there's a, are we still on track for the grant writing workshop with Nan Devlin in September?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a date for that?
That was, I think it's September 12th.
Josh will no doubt get it on the calendar.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get it on the calendar.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. Well, come, come back.
I have one other team.
Okay.
Staff report. I was really disappointed in our last council meeting because we had a very exciting promotion in the city of Manzanita. We have a wonderful police force and we were able, we weren't able, a very able person was promoted to sergeant and we didn't get a chance to give him an ovation. So I want to thank.
First on the agenda under new business is a liquor license application for the Neokani Bistro. I don't know if Mr. Castro is here.
Aisha was supposed to call in.
I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Castro.
Thank you, Council.
It's a little difficult for me to think of you as a mister because I remember you as a really energetic sixth grader in my room. So this is so.
It's okay. I still, first name addressing is weird too. I still call all of my teachers by mister whatever, mister whatever.
Good, good to have you here with us. Do you want to tell us about what you would like to see happen at the bistro?
So it's the same liquor license that we had previously. I just have to transition everything into my name because of my mom's passing. And the transfer of titles, she was never allowed to sign the last form before she passed away. So it's the exact same as we've had before. It's a Tuesday through Saturday operation, 4:30 until we say close, which is usually on eight, eight fifteen. And we just provide wine, beer and specialty cocktails in the restaurant, which liquor equates to about 10% of our average sales.
Okay, sorry to hear about your mother. Our thoughts are with you there.
Oh, thank you.
Is there any conversation from the council before this? Before we put this to a vote, is there any public comment? No public comment? All right. So do I have a motion from the council on this permit?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we'll give that one to Brad and do you want a second? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, so let the record show that the council approves this permit, OLCC license. Congratulations, Aisha. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anything else that you need from me?
Just your, your great presence is wonderful.
Oh, thank you. Well, I'm going to go back to work then.
There you go. All right. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you all so much. Have a great night.
Uh huh. Good, good evening. Next is another liquor license application from Michael Mudd, requesting a new liquor license for the Mud Dogs. And Michael, Mr. Mudd, I believe you're here.
I am.
And you don't have a speech prepared.
I do not.
That, okay. Bring it and tell us what you would like from us.
So I'm the new owner along with my brother with the Manzanita Mud Dogs. We have expanded our season, our hours. We close at 6:00 PM and I'm requesting consideration to have a liquor license approved. We do beer and wine only and it's on premise.
On premise.
Yeah.
Are there any questions from the public or comments?
I think a beer and a hot dog is a.
Yeah. Is there any discussion from the council?
Just, so you already have a license or?
I have a temporary license.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. And that says the first year you've had alcohol?
Correct.
How's that? Any? There's been stories to tell.
No, I think there's, you know, we're taking credit cards now, right? We're offering a beer and wine selection, evening hours, right? So I think it's all been very positive.
Yeah.
And it's, and like Aisha said, you know, that beer and wine sale, that's about five to 10% of our business so far this season.
Now, have you had any extra challenges because of your location and being outside? Anybody wanting to walk away?
There has been some people that said, hey, are these to go? And I was like, that's not our liquor license. We're an on-premise.
Okay.
For consumption. So we can't, yeah, there's no walking around Manzanita with, with beers.
Gotcha. All right.
If that's what you're asking.
Well, no, yeah, I'm not asking that we do that. I'm just asking that.
Yeah, but I, I don't believe I've had any issues.
All right.
Michael, you have so strongly supported the community and the children's program. Did a lot of donating to the schools. Are you still maintaining that donation to the, to the? I mean, we went on a lot of trips thanks to the Mudniks and we wouldn't have been able to go on field trips without you. So are you still maintaining that piece of the?
So Manzanita Mud Dogs are probably always going to be tied with the Mudnik Foundation. So my family's foundation and their support, it's been really great. Now the hot dog stand has accepted tips and donations kind of as a, as a pulpit. So it, and I might want to ask my mom, but we represent probably 10,000 to 15,000 bucks a year donating to the Mudnik Foundation.
That is wonderful.
Yeah.
We thank you for that.
Of course.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Okay. So do we have a motion from the council on this application?
I'll make the.
Thank you. And is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Let the record show that the council approves this request. Thank you, Michael, very much. Next under new business is a special event permit for the Mudzannita. Mud, did I say that? Okay, I got it. All right. So Ms. Rowana, owner of the Four Puzzles, requesting an event permit to hold the annual Mudzannita Parade and fundraiser on Lenida. It looks like it's set for September 9th from 10 to 3. And on the permit, there's an estimated guest number of about 100. And Ms. Simon, I think you're presenting that one for us?
Yeah, I told Megot I would cover this for her. She wasn't able to make it tonight, but this is the annual Mudzannita Parade. And they typically close off the street next to the visitor center. First thing they do, and this would be the one exception that I would suggest council support the closure of Lenida for about 10 minutes between the Little Apple and the beach so that the parade can occur. I think that takes about 10 minutes to get through. And then they have a fundraiser, they have silent auction. It's a great event where all of the, the resources go to Animal Haven by the Sea Rescue. So this is, I think, a longstanding tradition. I want to give a shout out to the mayor of Mudzannita, Mr. Fuggles, who also happens to be my neighbor. So I would highly recommend and staff would support the approval of this event permit.
Is there any public comment? And any discussion from the council? There is, yes.
My dog is running for the mayor of Mudzannita. I'm shosy, so I'm not giving her a plug.
Good luck with that. Okay, any discussion amongst the council?
I can just say I participated last year and it was a really well-attended event, really well-run event and people had a blast. They had a food card on first. I don't think they had any music last year, but they sold, sold some donated things. And then down on the beach, they had a whole bunch of games for the dogs and Noel contests. It was awesome. So unfortunately, my dog is well, behaved enough to. Maybe someday.
Okay, so do we have a motion from the council on this application?
To move somewhere.
And is there a second?
Second.
And if we put that to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Let the record show that the council approves this event permit. Next, under new business is the council approval for financial advising services of Grand Peaks Consulting and Accounting. And I believe Ms. Simon, you're leading this discussion?
I am. Thank you. So I'm very excited about this. We did, staff did an intermediate procurement process to select somebody to assist us in financial advising. And so in small towns like this, you oftentimes don't have that kind of expertise on hand. And we actually did a direct appointment with Grand Peaks Consulting, with Bonnie Dennis, and she helped develop a financial forecasting model for the city, which was instrumental in the city council being able to make an informed decision about the city hall project and other expenditures was something that the city didn't have previously. One of the major things that I would like to do in terms of leveling up our city is also getting us a functional model for the budget. I pretty much almost walked out in March because of the clunky model that I currently have. And so one of the things that I set to do when I started this position was to create both sustainable and ongoing systems that when I leave, someone else can seamlessly kind of come in. And there's nothing really more important to the city in many ways than our budgeting process. And so I did an RFP looking for someone who could assist with developing that model, working with the city to develop financial policies. And then my goal is over in the next two years, I hope, is to get us to the Government Financial Officers Association distinguished budget award. And so I've kind of already morphed the budget into that sort of framework as it is already. So it's basically goal oriented. How does the budget support the goals of the council? And what are some performance metrics in which we can measure that against? Because I think that that's a really important way to do public budgeting. And so to have somebody that has both expertise in Oregon budgeting law, who has a background, has an MBA, also is a certified public accountant, really understands the budgeting process to help us through those three kind of heavy lifts. And so some of you may or may not recall, but during the budget process, I did describe this as being one of the activities that I would undertake with the professional services line item in the administration's budget. And so we had a discussion about that at the budget committee and the budget was approved. And then the idea being having this as an ongoing contract for staff, myself and Nina Chris, our accounting manager, to help level her up too, to have somebody that she can work with on more complex issues that come up. So for example, we had a pretty complicated audit report last year. We didn't get Bonnie on board until after that and she reviewed our audit. She was like, wow, we could have pushed back on a few items. And so having that kind of expertise to both support staff and to help with those important financial reviews, I think is really essential to the city's financial integrity and staff support. So I think it'd be a big lift early and then ongoing support, I expect to be just a few hours a month. I'm proposing a five-year term for the contract. I don't expect that we will exhaust the full contract amount, but I'd like the flexibility should additional things arise. But those would be approved through the budget process as it's beyond just the hourly support that I've mentioned. And then I included an option for the city to be able to renew that contract if we haven't exhausted that contract amount. So we're just trying to follow the Oregon procurement rules and this creates just a simpler, cleaner process for staff to be able to seek those subject matter expertise in budgeting and financial fiscal management. So that's my ask is that council would delegate authority to me to execute this personal services agreement, professional services agreement with Grand Peaks. I should note, we got two proposals, one from FCS Group and one from Bonnie Dennis at Grand Peaks and both Nina and I did an independent evaluation. I did follow-up interviews with both and believe that Ms. Dennis has the Oregon budget expertise. And she also had a much better billing rate. So that's my recommendation.
I have a couple of questions because I have the contract from February, when it started, February 9. In there, there was a cash discount in this contract if you paid within 30 days, days of the billing. I don't see it in the, this contract, the new one that just came out.
Yeah, I don't think that's included.
It's not included. So this is a five-year contract?
Yes, or if we hit, so we did a, what we call a direct appointment. So I can appoint somebody up to $10,000 and we're getting close to that number.
Okay.
So that's why we're, we did a solicitation.
So their bill in July was $375. Is that kind of what you anticipate monthly?
For the ongoing support, yes. When we're not talking about a special project.
Okay. And the, it maxes at 150,000. Am I correct?
Yes.
And their hourly rate is 125?
Yes, and it only agrees 3% or whatever.
It says 6%.
6% or whatever the CPI is, whichever is higher.
Okay. So first we'll discuss this among the council. Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Simon. And then I'll open it up to the floor for public comments. The council will have a final conversation before the vote. Thank you, Joe. I always think of you when I say that. Is there any public comment? Open to the council discussion?
So, so Leila, in terms of special projects, which would Bonnie be involved in the revenue diversification process?
We can certainly involve her. Yeah. She'd be a good resource if there are certain tools that we want to implement could help guide us in how to do that most efficiently.
Have you, you and she discussed other prospective special projects?
No, I think the plate's pretty full with the budget and the financial policies and the GFOA. But having her on contract allows us to have that flexibility.
Yeah.
Could you tell us where we are with financial policies? Since you just mentioned it?
Yeah, we're right here.
Yeah.
So we need to get her on board and then.
I sent some to her.
Yeah, she has reviewed those.
Okay.
And so one of the next steps, if council approves the contract, we would start to sketch out a timeline and keep that going.
Okay, good. Okay, so that's.
My goal is to start that this fiscal year, so.
Okay.
So the advantage is we only pay her if we actually have her do a project.
Correct.
So it depends on what we ask her to do and that's going to be partially the decision of the council.
Yeah, and you know, for big ticket projects and items, like I've discussed with the budget document, with the financial policies and the GFOA, that's something that we should be talking about as the budget committee because that's a, that's a five-figure expenditure most likely. So, and I need to plan for that every year. But, so that would be my preference if we're doing big projects, that we try to incorporate that into the annual budget process. But then depending on how much flexibility we have in that line item, we can always, we have the flexibility to do a little more if we want to.
Okay.
She's very reasonable in terms of her hourly rate, having looked at some of the other.
Yeah, I kind of don't want her to know. Cause she's very good. She's got 20 years of Oregon budget experience. And that's really helpful. So for example, when we get ready to issue debt for city hall, she's gonna, I've never done a supplemental budget, so she'll be able to walk me right through that as opposed to me spending a whole lot of hours trying to figure it out on my own.
Have you worked with her before?
I have.
Yes. And was that in Milwaukee?
Yes.
Okay.
She went out on her own.
Okay, so you, you know who you're dealing with.
I know who I'm dealing with.
Okay. Do we have a motion from the council, council on this contract approval?
I move that we approve the contract as written.
As written. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Nancy, would you do roll call for this vote, please?
Hey, Linda? Yes. Brad?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Okay.
So let the record show that the council approves the contract proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, under new business is an update on grants. And I've been saying that word for a long time and so glad to see it pop up on the, on the agenda. So tell us about that.
Yeah, well, I have three things I want to update you on and I'll start with cash money in hand. So we did receive the grant from Business Oregon for abatement of asbestos of the schoolhouse and one's pet. So that's a $60,000 award. Yay. Thank you, Business Oregon. But I do need council to make a motion to authorize me to execute a grant agreement with Business Oregon. So before I proceed, I would request that you discuss that and potentially hopefully authorize me to do that. And then once we sign the grant agreement, just so folks know, it's a reimbursement-based grant.
Right.
So.
Downside?
No.
Is the grant agreement just for Underhill or?
It's just for, yeah, so it's just for, so the money we get has to go to the abatement of the asbestos and the demolition of those structures.
Both, both of them.
Yeah.
My question.
Why, yeah.
Okay.
One project.
I move that we accept the grant for the abatement of the buildings on Underhill Plaza.
And delegate authority.
And delegate authority to.
That's what you call teamwork.
Yes.
Oh. Oh. The question was, is that the total amount of the expensive abatement or?
No. No, the total amount. Two forty-eight or in the 250 range. You know, 60,000 is nothing to.
Is, are there any other applications for that abatement?
No.
Any other discussion from the council? Okay, we have the motion from Linda. Can you do a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. So let the record show that Ms. Amman has the authorization to complete the grant agreement.
Great. Thanks. So two others are pending grants. So I've applied for two grants in the last two weeks. One of them is one of our high priority projects in the TSP, the Transportation System Plan, and also the Downtown Transportation Plan, which is, don't get too excited now, but it's Classic Street north of Dorcas. So it would be the area between Manzanita Avenue and Dorcas. What we did is apply through the Small Cities Grant Allotment Programs through the Oregon Department of Transportation. And those are for capital projects up to $250,000, which we did a cost estimate to complete this project and it's $246,000. So I think Sandy actually brought up a crossing at Dorcas. This would actually include a striped crossing at Dorcas on Classic. It would include an eight-foot paved pathway on the east side of the road. So we would be eliminating parking on the east side, but it's consistent with our plan. And would extend all the way up past Fresh Foods to that corner. There would be a new crossing on Lanita, a crossing, a march crossing from on Classic and then across to Manzanita. So that will help support pedestrian access to Farmers Market, to City Hall, to Underhill Plaza. So I feel really good about that application. And we were actually, they reached out to us and asked if we had any projects that were really ready to go. And that one seemed like a logical choice. I do want to give a huge shout out to a local community member, Brian Sint. Brian's in Manzanita community. He is in our kindred spirits when it comes to geographic information systems. We're both GIS nerds and he helps put together some maps for that. But Brian also has a really extensive background in transportation grant writing and review. So having somebody like that, it's sort of, it's been a real help to me. So one of the things that Brian is actually assisting me with is evaluating options for us to look at Classic Street South. So the area between Classic Street and the Carney, what we can possibly do within that area. And so we're looking at a number of different grant options. We don't have anything right now. But that's one thing I have a lot of hope for is that, you know, if we can just get even to 30% design engineering on that right-of-way, we can have a much better understanding. And I have no problem saying this publicly, but the design that we currently have for the Classic Street right-of-way is what I would consider a cost prohibitive design. There's a good section of that right-of-way that is actually steep slope and would require a massive structure. And one of the recommendations that we have even in our Transportation System Plan is to how can we use the existing right-of-way to create a street section through design measures that are cost-effective, that can deliver what we all want there, which is a safer street for people to go walk and like and have automobiles on. And you may not know this, but Manzanita is a case study city for rural rights-of-way where you have a shared street system. So it's intentional that we don't have sidewalks everywhere. Our roads are supposed to be slow enough and safe enough that people can share them. So once the TSP is adopted, I'm psyched about looking at ways that we can actually start to implement that. But just wanted folks to know, we're really actively searching and having Brian with his background and 20-plus years of experience doing federal, state, local grants. Having that transportation background's just been super helpful. And then finally, I submitted a grant to the Department of Land Conservation and Development for $50,000 to do an update to our housing code. I think I mentioned at the last meeting that Senate Bill 406 passed, which now makes it a statutory requirement that the city of Manzanita meet the requirements in Oregon's middle housing rules. And so not only our comprehensive plan, but our zoning ordinance needs to be in compliance with state law by July of 2025. I'm pleased to say that the council passed a resolution last month to support that application. And I actually want to give a shout out to Commissioner Aaron Scar, Commissioner Mary Faith Bell, and Commissioner David Yamamoto. They also provided a letter of support to the city of Manzanita. We would be, as usual, the first city to execute on this. And I know we'll do it successfully. And we will be more than happy to share that information with partners throughout the county. So I feel really good about that application, but we'll have to see what we see. We should know about September, October, and that aligns perfectly with the comprehensive plan update, planning to release that RFP, I hope, in October or November. What this grant will allow us to do is not only address, so the comp plan will be addressing policy. This grant would allow us to then start to concurrently deal with the implementation. So amending the zoning ordinance on top of getting the policy work done. So I'm very excited about that. I think that's really a smart way to do it, but it's also expensive. So I hope that we'll hear positive news from DLCD and I'll be sure to keep folks posted.
Leila, what's the date on that ODOT grant? Do you, is it, will it be September?
I think it's September, Octoberish.
Octoberish? And with what you're saying about the other grants that you're applying for also, but the two, congratulations, it's really good news to hear. I know it's a lot of work. It's nice that you have some support with Brian. I know there's people in the community who would love to help as well. And let's get, let's get grant writing going. But is, with this potential funding, it almost sounds to me like Classic Street is getting some major attention. And when I talked with Dan at one point, improvements for that street were, the date he gave me was 2028.
Yeah.
Is that still the date or can we like?
We're lucky.
If we can do some of these things, can we, can we move that data?
Well, that's a good question, maybe. So I think the Dorcas Street project is a very complex project. So you have kind of three components. And this is actually outlined in our capital improvement plan, which is in the city's budget. So you have a roadway component that pays for the base, the asphalt, the top layer of all that stuff, right? Then you also have water. We'd be replacing a water line, which is, I think, I just looked at it, $1.8 million. And we need to install a stormwater facility. That's $1.5 million in today's estimate, right? So it's about a $4.4 million project.
Right.
We have zero funding for transportation and we have very little funding for stormwater. We will be voting on increasing the SDC in October, but that's 1,600 bucks per unit. It'd take a long time to get to $1.6 million. So the design element of it would get us to a point where we actually understand true costs. The road portion of it is actually the least expensive portion of it, especially if we can develop a right-of-way plan and design that's within the existing roadway. But we have to figure out how to fund it. And it's going to be a lot more complicated to come up with. We have the money in the water fund to do it, but we don't have the money in the stormwater fund and we don't have the money in the transportation fund. So your discussion next week, when we start talking about revenue diversification, will help advance or slow down the project. So finding dedicated funding sources for transportation and for stormwater infrastructure will be essential. If we can find grant money to pay for the whole thing, then awesome. And we will certainly be looking at that. But my suggestion to council is that we also got to figure out a way to create a reliable funding source so that we actually have resources to implement some of these projects. So it's a long answer to your question. I hope by 2028, like that would be dreamy. If we can find the money through a grant program, all the better. But I do think we should start by taking baby steps and big steps and us getting a grant to get that roadway surveyed. We actually don't have a survey that's fully for that roadway. And get us to 30% design, you know, much like we did with City Hall. We don't understand the cost until we start to really dig into the details. We can draw pretty pictures, but if they actually don't match up with what's there, then it becomes a lot more challenging to implement. So that's the approach that we're taking right now is trying to find funding to do that preliminary design and survey work so that we actually have a really robust cost estimate. And then that will actually make us more competitive for grants. Because right now, we're going in with sort of a dream and a wish. If we go in and say, we got 30% design engineering, here's the right-of-way we want to build, here's how much the infrastructure is going to cost, we're going to be far more competitive than if we go and say, we kind of want to fix this. And so that's how I'm trying to advance the project is to get us to a place where we actually have some real meat on the bones that we can actually then apply to these grant programs.
Right, sounds good. Where are we with system development charges for transportation for roads?
You have to adopt the TSP.
Then that's next month, is I?
You will begin the process of adopting the TSP in October. Second reading is November. We have a, well, Planning Commission didn't make their recommendation until the 31st. We have a 35-day notice period to the Department of Land Conservation and Development. I have to draft an ordinance to make those changes, which I did today. And so there's a process that goes with that. Once we have that in place, then we actually have to have a study done on those projects, the costs, and then from there we can move towards that. So that will likely be something we need to discuss in the next budget cycle into budget resources to do a study. Much like the water system and the stormwater system, you have a full capital plan, 20-year capital plan. So we need a more robust capital plan than we have.
Okay.
It is always more complicated.
Yeah.
I think it's going to be. I mean, it just.
Don't give up.
Yeah.
Just do it.
And actually, in the long run, this is a much better way to go.
Well, it's the only way to go. We don't even have authority under our current ordinances to do transportation SDCs.
No, I understand that. We, but we got to get there. Yeah.
Yeah.
We do. Yeah, we're getting there. We're putting the pieces in place. Yeah.
Yeah, that's the starting point. You know, we can go from there.
So I have one more question. And your explanation of the classic was beautiful and excellent. I don't want quite that detailed.
Short version?
Yeah, short or clip notes? Some people like the detail.
Well, no, they do. Matt, that was, that was truly good, very helpful. But you know, I hear a lot in the community about this comprehensive plan. And we've just gone through an issue that really points to the fact that we need to update our comprehensive plan. I've heard it should take six months.
Sorry.
So could you just, again, clip notes?
Clip notes, sure. Community involvement. Hey, that should tell you something right there, right? A foundation of a solid and good plan is based on community involvement. You're updating 15 statewide goals that haven't been touched in 20 to 30 years. So the community involvement portion of it's going to take us months to get through. Then we do policy development, right? So that's actually drafting the policies. We go back out if we're doing our jobs well and ask, did we get it right? And then we propose that and we go through several processes. We go through the Planning Commission, reviews all of those policies, provides feedback, there's a back and forth. Then it gets recommended to City Council for adoption. So these things take time. And my estimate's going to take us about 18 months to get through that process when you're updating 15 of the statewide planning goals. If we can move faster, we will.
Well, but we also want to get it right. And that's really critical. So after you do the comprehensive plan, then the ordinances, the zoning ordinance that would follow, or is that done about the same time?
Well, my hope and dream is that there are two elements of the comp plan that I'd like to see done concurrent, housing, which we just talked about. So if we get the grant from DLCD, you sort of have different subject matter experts, folks that know how to develop policy and comp plans and folks that know how to develop ordinances and current planning type stuff, right? They're actually very different skill sets. So my hope is that with respect to Goal Two, which is the land use chapter, so things like the SRR zone, that we have enough resources and the team that we hire, so the RFP I'm going to craft, especially if we're successful getting a grant from DLCD, will allow us to get the policy work done. So we tranche it, we'd have buckets, basically, where we address Goal Two, which is land use, Goal 10, which is housing, first. We get that policy work rocking and rolling, generally approved by council, and then we can concurrently start dealing with the code work while we're updating the other 13 goals. That's my hope and dream. So if we structure the RFP right, we can do some of that stuff concurrently. Some of it's going to have to come later, you know, implementation. The last comp plan I worked on was an award-winning comp plan in the city of Milwaukee. And they're still working on implementation and we adopted that in 2020. So it takes time because you have natural resources. We have dune management mitigation. That will hopefully be in the first tranche of things that we work on. So these things, they take time. They take time to do them right.
Last question. So if we, like the SRR, as a perfect example, or could be the commercial zone expanding or no, that's going to affect the land use. I mean, that's going to affect the price of property. So how do we, do we get, do we have to notice people if this is happening? Is kind of how does that process work?
Yeah.
Because I don't, I know it's not in the dark of night.
Yeah, anytime you make a change to zoning, you have to do what's called the Measure 56 Notice. And that's particularly true if you're removing entitlement. So hypothetically, you have an area that maybe allows a whole bunch of things, like hotels and commercial districts. If there's any interest in removing any of that in any part of that zone, you absolutely have to lose folks because we can, because that is a removal of a property, right? So there's all these steps. That's why things like this can't just take six months. Like you're actually changing the laws, you have to follow rules. And so a Measure 56 Notice is likely going to be required for pretty much any change that we make to the zoning ordinance.
So that is going to add additional time.
Okay.
Well, that's helpful. Thank you. And was I saying to you, we're talking.
Can we ask questions?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Chuck.
What is step one and what's the timeline for step one?
Step one is hire a consultant.
Okay.
And the timeline is, my hope is to get a consultant on board by the end of the year.
And that would be specifically, what kind of consultant, Ms. Amman?
A planning consultant.
A planning, okay.
And they usually, so usually the teams I was on when I did this, you have a community engagement, some consultants. You might have an economics consultant on there. It just depends, the team. But it's usually led by a planning firm. And then if we add in code work, we'll want either that firm to have that capability or have a sub consultant that has that capability.
I have heard, sort of like Linda's listening as well, that a citizen was talking about comprehensive plans being able to sort of update as we go, not having to, so. And my understanding was that the chairman of the Planning Commission was, said yes to that question as well. So.
Can I clarify?
Well, I, it's one of those things like that someone says, oh, we can update the comprehensive plan. Something comes up, we can define hotels, for example. We don't have to wait until we've got a whole year plan full with consultants that tell us we have to do all these things. When something comes up, like dune grading for view, can't, can't we, can't the Planning Commission take that one step at a time and upgrade the comp plan as it's, as we run into it? Is, does that?
Yeah, you totally can do that. I would invite you though to pay very close attention to how long it's going to take for us to update Goal 12, the transportation element of the comp plan, and how much incredible amount of work goes into doing an update to a comp plan and a zoning ordinance. Doing that piecemeal, you go from an 18-month timeline to like a 10-year timeline. You can't, doing it piecemeal makes it far more challenging and difficult than trying to kind of hit the whole thing at once. It's a much bigger lift for the community. It's a much bigger lift for the consultant. It's certainly a bigger lift for staff, but you're doing it all at once. And there's something to be said about the momentum behind doing it that way. The reason why we elected not to update Goal 18 is because we knew we were updating the comp plan. So we implemented a moratorium, which you'll be hopefully renewing next month, so that we could at least just set that aside and go through the process. Many of the things in the goals and the statewide planning rules are connected. So if you do one, it actually has implications on the other. And so there's a great deal of efficiency if you're able to do them at the same time. Because all the work had been done on the TSP, it made sense. And I kind of also wanted you to practice. And I kind of also wanted you to practice and go through the process and see what it takes. Because we can do all of this discussion and all of this work, but the adoption process is usually what slows things down. Okay. Because that's when we start getting into the nitty gritty of stuff. Um, but if we do it piecemeal, I mean, in my professional opinion, um, I think that that would take longer. It would be more expensive and it would not be nearly as effective.
Well, um, three J, that, when I went through their scope of work and their, in their, uh, contract, um, they have right there like number two or three under their scope is updating comp plans.
How and their services they provide.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Uh, have you, um, are you, are you engaging conversations with them about that?
No, um, and I'll tell you why. So, um, so three J, we have hired Scott Fragonese with three J, he's our contract planner. So he does current planning, um, and just, I'll try to be quick. Current planning is like a land use application comes in, they evaluate the code, does it fit, staff report findings, yada, yada. Uh, long range planning is like comp planning, big picture policies, what do we want to be in twenty years, et cetera, et cetera. They do both. Um, so Scott is our contract planner. I have not engaged him because I want them to have the opportunity to compete for the project. Um, if they weigh.
So it would be a separate project going out.
Oh, yeah. It's a completely separate R F P, um, since we expect it to be over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We actually have to do, if we do the housing portion of it, if we don't, it'll be less. But I want to do a full, what they call a full formal R F P, where we actually put it out to anybody in the world. Um, and so that we can attract the best talent and, um, hopefully get the best team. We will get the best team on board. So, and three J will hopefully, um, be part of that mix. But if I engage them in that process, I have, I don't feel that that's ethically appropriate.
Yeah, okay, got it. I understand.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to go back.
Where are we at?
Yeah.
I just tried to understand, so when you were talking about the grants that you'd apply.
Yeah.
And the one, the, the first one, I think you implied was between, uh, Classic, I was on Classic, the North Side of Classic. Was that grant just for the design or is that for actually?
All of it.
We already designed it?
Well, no, it'll be all done as part of it. But there is in the, um, it's a pretty straightforward.
Well, I guess my point is that, I think that the, um, intersection between La Nita and Classic is kind of goofy. It's really, I, I, I run into a lot of issues. I have a big car and, uh, when you turn right onto, uh, La Nita and the Classic, it's really hard. There and, and traffic backs up all directions and then the person might have a trailer. I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, you're taking a lane or you're saying you're going to, um, put some pedestrian right away. But, I mean, I see so many cars that make that corner and go right over the curb. So I don't know if that's something, I know it's real miniscule.
Yeah, no, 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 it's not. And, and the design will hopefully address that. So, um, part of it is increasing pedestrian and ADA safety too. Um, but I know exactly what you're talking about and we watched that section of the project that totally came up. Um, so it should help. You can't solve bad driving. Those guys may be. But, uh, but we can certainly do our best to design it to the highest safety standard possible.
That's a really interesting.
Yeah.
Do you have any other discussion?
Thank you.
Ooh, thanks. Take a break. Actually, I have an update from, uh, Council Kozlowski on the, uh, council retreat.
Right, so, um, uh, we announced to the community that the council, mayor and city manager, we're going to have a retreat, uh, coming up. And we actually set a date, but a number of issues have come up that have prevented us from actually choosing a date at this point. First, it was awfully hard to get everybody on a specific date, ready to go. So that was one issue. Secondly, uh, the investigation is not complete. And then until the investigation is complete, we don't want to move forward with the, with the retreat. And lastly, we will have a new counselor on in September. And I think it would be really helpful to have that counselor involved in the retreat so that we, we're, we're all in sync moving forward. So, uh, what, we're going to postpone the decision for a date until, uh, September. And then we'll work with whoever is selected as a new counselor in terms of setting a date, uh, for the retreat. We've talked to Jill, the, the woman that was here and talked about leading a retreat. And she really recommended and thought that was a really good plan. So, uh, come hang tight, uh, we'll be back to you and we will have a specific date, hopefully in September. Um, which brings me to the discussion about the process. So we have advertised on the website and on the variety of places that we're looking for a new city counselor. It just feels really lonely without Jenna right now.
By myself.
So we're really looking forward to getting another person on and in council. And that is an appointment process. So what happens is hopefully, uh, I just talked to Nancy and we don't have any applications at this point. Uh, I really encourage you to think about applying for the city council position. Um, there is a, a, uh, questionnaire application that you fill out, uh, and that comes to us. And then the process is, um, I would say kind of our take, because what happens is we have to interview each of the people in front of council and in front of the public. Uh, it's a very public process. We will be kind, I promise, so don't let, don't let that intimidate you. Um, but what I want to ask the council, um, questions are really important that we ask. I think the, the counselor in the, the selection process is going to be more critical, uh, now. So I'm going to ask you to each come up with questions that you'd like to ask. If you get those questions back to me, I'll put them all together and then send them out and we can select. We usually have four to five questions that we ask. And I want to make sure all of us are in agreement, uh, with those questions. So if you could get those to me, um, by next Friday, a week from Friday, that would be great. And then I'll get them back to you. So does anybody have any questions about the process?
Application deadline?
Uh, twenty eighth, August twenty eighth.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, August twenty eighth. So please don't wait too late.
So far.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Did you say you have no applicants so far?
We have no applicants. So I did talk to Nancy and she indicated that's not unusual, that usually people submit their application as it gets closer to the closing date. So at this point, we're not panicked. But we are concerned, so, um, we hope, we hope you'll think about it.
Have we mentioned that it's a volunteer position? What an incredible amount of time. Okay, thank you for that. Um, I was in a meeting the other day and, and someone was referring to the new C E O. It took me a while to put the pieces together, but, um, Officer Sims is going to present our new C E O, who was our court code enforcement officer. And Max, it is so nice to see you. I think I remember when you were born and I had Amanda in my classroom a couple of years. Uh, it, it, it is heartwarming to have our young people come back and, and work for our community. It really is. So congratulations and thank you tenfold. And I'll turn it over to you, Officer Sims.
Uh, hey, so I'm Mike. Yeah, Sergeant Mike. I'm Mike and we've added a, we've recently added a code enforcement officer. And I like to think of it as code compliance because it sounds so much nicer than enforcement. But he's a code enforcement guy, he's a C E O. So, um, uh, really there was a process, we had a couple of good applications. Uh, we landed on Max. Uh, I know that, um, uh, Max did grow up here, he graduated Neocani High School. I'll let him tell them a little bit about himself, but, um, ultimately, I, I think it's a good selection. I think Max is like super, I feel like. I feel like Max is a good choice because he's super receptive to the whole idea that we want to gain compliance through education. Uh, and before enforcement. So before we just show up with this new guy on a ticket book, like, let's, let's help him learn his job. By, by just educating us so that we can help you. So Max, again, thanks for being receptive to that. I beat it into his head, it's worth it for me. Really, compliance through education before we talk about enforcement. And we'll even get into that, I think, on the next section, Dark Sky. But anyways, thanks for letting me address you from here, so I can see all of your faces. Max, can you please, uh, tell us about yourself? Tell us what you got going on, where you've been, who you are. Thanks.
Look, he's following the rules. He was well taught.
My name's Max, I've grown up in the Harlem, uh, about eighteen years, graduated Neocani High School. Uh, decided to go to Portland State University, lived downtown Portland for a couple of years. Uh, moved to Beaverton for about four more years. Uh, graduated with, with a degree in criminology and criminal justice and decided to minor in child and youth family studies. Uh, saw an opportunity in La Nita and decided that I would like to go back where I grew up. Um, and I would just like to thank you guys for the opportunity you've given me.
It's really great.
It's delighted to have.
Glad to be here.
We may call you back.
Excited we are that your uniform includes Kathy Nurse.
Uh, great state for the record, that was on purpose. That goes out to you, Steve Nettle. Thanks for tolerating him. Uh, you do kind of have to sit here to do the next bit.
Oh, here we go.
Yeah, next, um, Max, you can pull up your chair too. The overview, is this, uh, is this the overview? Is this the overview of the?
Yeah, so we'll talk, I'm going to talk a little bit about, um, uh.
Brad's going to.
Easy, okay.
I'm trying to keep order here, you're not making it easy.
I'm, I'm very difficult, I know.
Brad's got the floor, Mr. Mayor, Council Mayor.
Last summer out, when I was out campaigning. Uh, since, uh, the election, I've heard a lot of comments about a lot of things that bother people in town. A lot of things that bother people in town, but one of the ones that I hear the most is about lighting. And, um, it comes from, um, residents complaining about other residents. It comes from residents that have problems with, uh, second homeowners that, uh, leave all their lights on and are gone for six months at a time or, or extended periods. And it comes from, um, short term rental owners who, uh, feel like they were unfairly treated by being singled out, um, in the ordinance, uh, that they were forced to comply with. So as a person who's pretty sensitive to, uh, noise and light myself, uh, I thought it would be, um, interesting for us to, uh, try and improve, uh, our lighting situation in, uh, our community. So I asked Leila and the city staff to look at the options, uh, and the challenges about implementing a, uh, dark sky standard citywide ordinance. And as I did the research, um, into dark skies, a lot of benefits to dark skies. We have migrating birds, we have animal populations, we have energy conservation and, uh, we really have livability, the effects of, um, light on people's sleep. And ability to enjoy the, uh, meteor shower that's coming up. Uh, looking at the Milky Way, I think we've both seen a lot of beautiful pictures of the Milky Way by some photographers. So, uh, Sergeant Mike and, uh, C E O Max, uh, have put together a really excellent presentation. And, uh, after that, we're going to be able to discuss some things as far as timeline implication, enforcement, if it's even something we want to do. I realize that normally this would be brought up at a, uh, work session, but, uh, I was asked to bring it up this council meeting. So I guess we're going to tackle it tonight a little bit. Um, I will say, I think this is really doable. I don't think this is a, a big reach. Um, it's going to require a little bit of economic sacrifice and time sacrificed by, um, those of us in the community that aren't compliant. Um, but I think in the end, it's going to make our community a lot nicer and a lot better place. So with that, turn it over to you.
Thanks, sir. Uh, let me see, what do we got here? Um, so I've got about eight minutes and some slides to share some information. Uh, and I'll take your questions at the end. Thanks for your patience. Uh, first of all, uh, illumination, thank you. Uh, can I just point and, and click down arrow, is that where, is that you? Okay. I gotta catch my bearings. So illumination nuisance, dark sky ordinance. So I don't get too many phone calls about, hey, Officer Mike, I'm really worried about the birds flying over, but I get all kinds of calls about my neighbor's light is too bright. So, uh, I'm, I'm going to address that first before we get to the birds. Um, but right now, uh, what we're going to talk about, what I'm going to, uh, talk with you about is, uh, touch, uh, based on a few of these items, including our current city S T R ordinance for dark sky. Uh, the fact that we get a lot of, uh, uh, information from Dark Sky International, they're a great resource. I found that other city ordinances, when they draft for lighting licenses, they use a lot of the same, uh, language and they're doing the same research and dark sky seems to be where everybody sort of lands on. They've been around for a while, they're a big deal in this, in this forum. So, um, we'll, we'll touch a little bit about what they do, who they are. Also, um, there's some information about our, our, our neighboring cities. I've got a few, uh, ideas from, uh, Seaside and Cannon Beach without having to reinvent the wheel. We're going to suggest to you what, what I think. Um, and then we're going to talk about a little bit of the impact on staff and financial. You mentioned that a little bit, but I can maybe, uh, clear up some of that. And then we want to send some questions back to you to, you know, answer, talk about before you make a decision. So, um, Dark Sky International, again, they're, uh, the recognized worldwide authority when it comes to light pollution. And they really have, uh, a lot of information about keeping neighborhoods livable as well as, um, those other impacts as far as, uh, what you were talking about, uh, Mother Nature and whatnot. So what they do, international dark, uh, sky places, they certify, um, sky parks, communities, other places around the world. They inform the public on how artificial light can harm humans, wildlife and our climate. But really, they, uh, do a great job with residential outdoor lighting that reduces light pollution. And they've got a lot of different examples, um, that homeowners can take advantage of. For example, the luminaires or the light fixtures as well as light bulbs as a quick fix to talk about how bright something is or how warm or soft something is. So they've got all of that information. Again, every city seems to, well, the few cities that I, I researched, that we researched, uh, that we came up with, uh, language that they're pulling from this. So if we move on to, um, they've, uh, got some definitions that they've provided, uh, five principles that kind of guide, uh, us as well as those other cities and their ordinances. All light should have a clear purpose, be directed only where it's needed. It doesn't need to be any brighter than it should be. Um, it's only on when it's useful. And of course, they touch base on warmer colored lights, which is a measurable amount. We can get into that in a second. So they also have definitions on outdoor lighting basics. Can I get up or am I stuck here? Am I? Okay, real quick, so, um, if you have this little diagram, useful light from the street light and then all of the glare zone, the light trespass that we talk about, and this could be your neighbor's or a city light. So they give great definitions on, uh, downward light, uh, lighting that's at higher angles and then the glare zone that's sort of, uh, really interrupts your sleep and, and, um, and maybe the relationship you have with your neighbor. And then they talk about upward light, which, you know, we talked about, um, the light pollution for, uh, migration, et cetera, for, for, uh, for animals. They also have definitions for shielding. Thanks, but for sure, uh, we got full shielding, partial shielding and unshielded. Those are pretty, pretty obvious of what they're doing, but, um, the idea is, uh, with partial, uh, shielding, some light can be seen when viewed from the side, but it appears, uh, to not be upwards. We're looking for that full shielding. We understand that some of you live in houses and they're above other houses and there's houses behind you. So shielding is going to be challenging at this point. But we talk about shielding and then maybe manipulating the source of light by purchasing different bulbs, et cetera. We could maybe sort of make it a little bit easier for your neighbors to understand that. They do have suggestions on their website, uh, uh, regarding the different types of, of hardware or, or fixtures that they use. Uh, something that would be nice is if we could get maybe current contractors and builders to maybe review the city's policy if we decide to expand from S T R citywide. They can maybe check in with our policy before they start building and, and maybe we can give them some recommendations through Scott's office on, hey, this is what we're trying to achieve and please consider this while you're building, et cetera. Not exactly sure how contractors work, but if the homeowners want to go to Home Depot, they can look for these two symbols, there's an old logo and a new logo. This logo should be attached on a lot of fixtures or light bulbs, uh, that, that would promote dark sky or softer lighting. Uh, moving along, partially shielded lights on the top, fully shielded. Now, this is a, uh, picture of Linda Kozlowski's garage. She became compliant through education before enforcement. We didn't have to write your ticket, no, that's not your garage. Um, partly shielded, fully shielded, it's super easy to get, um, if, if you don't have one of those neighbors that have those lights. Um, Seaside City Ordinance, they have, I don't know. Seaside City Ordinance, they have, I don't know, seven or eight, nine pages. I just wanted to kind of pick and choose because I really like that they're. I mean, I didn't want to go through all of the photos, so I downloaded this or we got this snippet because it really talks about shielding and glare eliminations for their ordinance. Outdoor lighting installed or adjacent to residentially developed property must not be more than 20 feet above the ground. So council, talking about height limits. And that's something to think about if you're talking about multiple-story buildings. Even the fact that flag poles, we have a few in town. And by federal law, you can light those up all night long. In fact, I think you have to chuck on a flag flown at night, you have to light that. Is that correct?
Dedicated to the flag itself, nothing else.
So if we have a couple of those things, we could still get around that by, not get around that, but work with that by shielding. So something to think about. Shielding and glare elimination, continuing non-exempt outdoor light fixtures should have translucent covers, eliminate glare or direct shielding. So I really like Seaside and their approach on shielding. We could talk about lumens and how bright light bulbs are. I think we're still gonna get that, but if we could shield any light and still make it useful for the residents, they can see their doorstep. There's some concern about, oh, my pathway might be dim or whatnot. But if we can just work with folks, education, maybe a workshop before this happens, we'll get to that. Moving on to Cannon Beach, they also have an ordinance, they have general requirements for their ordinances for residential properties, including multiple residential properties not having common areas. All outdoor luminaries for fixtures shall be shielded and not exceed 1,000 to 2,000, or excuse me, not to exceed 1,260 lumens. Again, you can kind of, there's some research online. I think there's a packet that was given to council that talks about the relationship between lumens and wattage. And that kind of, the higher the wattage, the higher the ordinance. Cannon Beach also has exceptions, so something to think about when we have or if we decide to take this STR ordinance and expand it citywide, please consider some of the exceptions that they have as well. Again, really banging on shielding that light source. If I continue on to the budget impact, of course, there will be some public notifications, mail, social media. I think it'd be great if we could sit down and talk about maybe our new city ordinance at a certain time or at least invite the public on, you know, maybe on my time during my shift. Doesn't have to be a city council thing, but I would love to share that education just to let people know that, hey, there might be a grace period here or an expectation of the next two years we're gonna try to become compliant if we decide to expand this ordinance. And then if there is a grace period, can you go back one? There is a grace period so that we're not just showing up at the end of two years, you didn't fix your light fixture. We're gonna give you a ticket. We just want to talk about that education part. If we talk about enforcement, other cities, if I look at Seaside and Cannon Beach, they have nuisance ordinances that talk about noise. And I didn't see lighting in their nuisance ordinance, but their enforcement was like $500 a day until there's compliance gained. And it seems a little steep to me for those type of nuisances. But I really like where we're at currently with our current STR ordinance. I believe it's $120, $150 a day to become compliant, or excuse me, a citation until compliance is gained. So you're gonna have to think about, do we enforce that? Is there a monetary penalty for that? What can we do? But I think 500 is a little steep up there in Cannon Beach, but maybe they can work with that. So I think there's a little bit of a budget impact in the beginning. We've got to educate folks and we're gonna be spending money on responding. If we need to respond, well, that's gonna cost you money because we have to go address these violations with a big smile. But we're already here, so you're paying for that anyway. Moving along past the budget impact, work session recommendations. I guess today's sort of that work session that you were talking about. So really, really focusing on shielding, light trespass. Something to consider would be timed and motion lighting. There may be curfews on those motion lights. If somebody has a motion light, this ordinance could include the fact that their motion light would have to be on or off within 20 or 30 minutes. Motion lights still provide that safe walkway to your house or to your residence, but it also doesn't annoy your neighbor if we're talking about a timer on motion lights. Recommendations, we want to take the current STR, which we saw back on slide two, and just expand it citywide. I think that's fair. The folks that created that, are there anybody in the room? Right? Thanks for your labor and I'm sure you're with Dark Sky International as well. But Joe also had a hand in putting together that short-term rental dark sky ordinance. And again, our recommendation is just to take what we have and just make it citywide and then talk about education enforcement. It's appropriate. It will be complaint-based, so Max is not gonna be driving around looking for light bulbs with like a magnifying glass and some sort of lumen counter. But if there's a complaint about your neighbor, chat with your neighbor, buy him a cup of coffee or call us. We'll buy him a cup of coffee or something, you know, we'll talk about compliance. A grace period after the initial. So if we say, hey, let's try to adopt this and we move it out within two years, we'd like everybody to be compliant, maybe one or two years. Well, that date, there should still be a grace period, I believe. I'd recommend that so that we're not just going after citations, because that's not the point here. We just want to gain compliance and catch some sleep. Outside of that, it's just some basic information piggybacking off of Brad there. But if there's any questions, please, please, I think that we're close to the questions that I would leave you or ask you to consider. What do we do with existing structures versus new structures? Consider that timeframe I mentioned. What about holiday lighting? Maybe holiday lighting, there's curfews. Maybe that curfew is by month. Maybe that curfew is by hour. So for example, I'm not suggesting this, but just questions for you to think about. Do we have holiday lighting, Christmas lights between November and January? And they gotta be on a timer. We're off by 11 or 12. Just some things to think about. What we don't want to run into is holiday lighting that offends people so bad that it becomes a rift between neighbor and neighbor. And we actually already have that in the city limits of Manzanita. All the more reason we should just have an ordinance that we can lean up against and be like, hey, this is what we got. Please comply.
Sergeant, does the STR ordinance allow holiday lighting or address that?
It does not address that.
Okay.
It does not address that. So you could simply say all lighting. Or you could say with the exception of holiday lighting, we're going to make a decision based on how long, maybe it has a curfew, maybe it doesn't.
There seems to be a growing number of these white light loops over patios.
Yeah, like party lights.
Party lights.
Party lights.
Same, same sort of thing.
Well, I suppose it could be applied to that, especially if it's, if it's an STR. But I would really hate to see an STR be held to a different standard on lighting than the city.
Totally.
So.
Take the ordinance and run it citywide, yeah.
I've never been called out on party lights.
Yeah, well, there you go.
So.
I'll give you a call.
You know my number.
I do.
Okay, so we could, we could potentially respond to, it doesn't really matter what the light source is, but we could, we could have a chat with them and then such a game of compliance really comes out of that.
It may have to do with the lumens of party lights. I don't know, but I'm guessing party lights don't spread their light as far, like they don't reach the next house. I, that's a possibility, but I don't know.
Maybe it's an annoyance out of the corner of your eye or something. But yes, something to think about if you want to include all lights or party lights, so include that, Christmas lights or.
As far as enforcement goes, we were chatting a little bit. I think the shielding is the way to go.
Yeah.
Talked about, speaking with, you talked to me about meter, you know, having to shoot a meter at the light and the problems and whether it works.
From that conversation, I mentioned that I spoke with a Cannon Beach police officer who actually responds to dark sky violations. And I said, what do you know about dark sky? And she said, this is a terrible, terrible thing to try to enforce if they answer their door. It comes down to how bright are these lights for the neighbors? And they've made some headway by suggesting shielding and it sort of is a win for everybody. The cost of shielding could depend on the fact that either folks are buying something brand new or they're making modifications to their current. Joe and I had a conversation where somebody's spray painting the inside of kind of that jelly jar light fixture that we see on a lot of outside, the outside of people's residence, front store, front door. So there's some options. And in Cannon Beach, speaking with that officer, that's kind of her go-to. It's just try to work with folks on what can they do to solve the problem without standing outside, waiting for the motion light to come on and then detecting lumens. Seems, I mean, we'll do it, but there might be some kickbacks, so I'm not looking forward to that. How do we regulate security lights, flags? We mentioned that a little bit, height regulations, landscape lighting. This is like, to me, an easy fix with those motion timers, or excuse me, those, just a timer, not even a motion timers. It's a timer, a light on a timer. So something we could talk about during the education portion of this. So with that.
I have a question. What sort of complaints do you get with the STR, STRs who, who are compliant? I mean, to the ordinance, I mean, are you still getting complaints on STRs, I guess is my question?
So.
Though there's an ordinance in place.
Lighting, no.
Not on lighting?
It's noise, it's too many people and it's, it's parking, it's noise.
Okay, not lighting.
We haven't gotten too much about lighting and maybe they've done a great job of making that clear.
Okay.
Or taking the steps to prevent that type of violation. But I'm not aware of lighting light violations coming from STRs that I have fielded the next day.
Where we have the advantage of short-term rentals is that we can give them three years to comply.
Or your next inspection.
So when Scott or building official goes out and does the inspection, that's when the insurance compliance is met. So we've been able to have a greater influence in implementing that ordinance because we have more control over what happens in short-term rentals. And in this case, you wouldn't.
When I was looking at some of the other ordinances, they had zones. Basically, we have a commercial zone and residential zones. And I don't know if that's something we want to talk about. And the other thing was the compliance of the city. Our streetlights. We have some, some potential compliance factors as well. So I don't know if we can have a workaround as far as having a separate zone or district. Lanita, do it citywide and all, but I think that's something else to think about.
Dan let me know too that the PUD changed all their light fixtures and that they would be willing to put shielding in as we asked them to as well. So that's a big deal. Usually, usually it's the streetlights that are a big deal. So I think that's important to note. And the city would of course comply with whatever ordinance it was that we draw. But I do, that's a great point. Like, do you want it to apply to the commercial districts? Is there a different standard? And I don't know in your research if you.
So in our current zones, we do have, we do have advertisement or in our current zoning ordinance, we have advertisement regarding lights and the fact that we're not looking for bright neon lights on Lanita from businesses. When we talk about the noise differences between our commercial zone, we actually have a difference in decibel level for the commercial zone to be versus our residential zone. So that's something you come up with as far as lights, but I don't know if that answers your question.
I was wondering if any of the cities you researched, if you know off the top of your head, if they have differentiation between their.
Yeah, they did. Cities have different zones based on, I mean, we don't have that problem as far as like warehouses and, you know, industrial districts and all that kind of stuff. But, you know, I guess I, and then Lanita, the dark, in the dark recently, so I don't know what it looks like.
That's why that's shocking.
But so I don't know, that's something to think about. And then, like you said, the time to bring people into compliance and the grace period and penalty. Now, we need to reinvent the wheel, obviously. I think keeping it simplest is gonna be best, but I think as we all know, everybody's good at finding the exception, so.
Is there a city ordinance you particularly like?
Yeah, no, I read, I just read a bunch of them on this, on the same website that Mike is referring to. So no, they just, they give kind of general recommendations. They didn't have really, you know, things for councils to think about, things for the community to think about.
Were they all like based?
Yeah.
So.
I shouldn't say this, I don't know if they're all companies based, but I think, you know, as far as new construction goes, that's an easy one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It's the retrofit and the existing.
So Mike, what do you expect from us tonight? What, what do you want in terms of decision guidance?
Well, I would say consider the information, but really we're looking at the STR outline and that's the closest thing we have.
Okay.
We already have that. So my recommendation, what I would like for you to do is adopt it citywide.
Okay.
I mean, if we, we take a look at it. Number one's great. I mean, gosh, that really helps me as a responding unit. I can show up and like, well, is it shielded or is it partially shielded? How can we face this? There are, number two does talk about how warm that is and it gives a rating of 3,000 K. I don't exactly know what the K means because it's not lumens. It talks about the, how soft a light is. Go inside with LED. Thank you, Kelvin. Thank you. Sounds like science. So the 12 hours, I mean, gosh, motion detectors, they've done a great job. Thank you, Joe. I mean, they've done a great job coming up with it. It was really just, gosh, I could show up and enforce all of this like rather quickly. And what I mean enforce, I mean, gain compliance. So we'll at least have a plan and a solution.
Yeah, no, I, this looks really good. I, the concern I have are motion detectors because animals set motion detectors lights off. I mean, you know, it's.
So do bad guys.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a comment from the floor, Joe Newhouse, yeah?
The, the thing with motion detectors and floodlights is that, yeah, you want it to come on when a burglar comes through your yard. You want it to come on when you take your dog out in the middle of the night. But if the security light does not shine on the adjacent house, it's not a problem. The problem is when it shines in your bedroom window.
Okay.
And so if it goes on with the motion detector, it goes on, it's, that's okay. It's still night sky. It's directed properly.
Yeah, okay.
That's the shielding factor.
Well, is it shielded? Is that?
There is, you can buy a ship, sorry. But if you go out here after the meeting, you will see two floodlights that are on motion detectors and they are night sky certified because they shine directly down.
Okay, okay. So how hard is it for us to adopt that ordinance citywide?
Not hard. And what we would do, talking to these guys, we would just do a separate ordinance. It's like dark sky compliance and we would just use the same language. And if there's anything else that we want to address, whether you want to have different zones.
Curfews.
Curfew.
Yeah.
This would be good guidance for staff to get. And then what we can do is come back at a work session and just sort of give you a draft of what we proposed based on your feedback. And then when you give us a thumbs up, then we'll just browse through the.
Let's do it.
The adoption process.
Yeah, I think full shielding is kind of a no-brainer. I think that, gotta decide about the zone, if we want to have any zones or if we're gonna just do it citywide. Then I think we need to also decide how long we're going to allow this.
Combine.
How long?
So what about a curfew?
Curfew, I'm not sure.
Yeah, like so, you know.
Christmas light.
Christmas light, curfew of a 10, something like that. I'd like, kind of like a noise.
The Cannon Beach ordinance has something this one doesn't, which it, it accounts for low voltage landscape lighting. There's nothing about that in this ordinance. And that's a completely different animal than a line voltage bulb. And that ordinance required landscape lighting to be off a 10. But this one makes no provision for landscape lighting at all.
Would outdoor light fixtures, how would you interpret that from enforcement?
Because landscape lighting really isn't light fixtures.
Right.
It's, it's really a completely different animal. And low voltage tells it all, line voltage. And low voltage tells it all. Line voltage, most of those fixtures are all line voltage. So it's low voltage is 12 volt. So it doesn't, the lights are LEDs and they don't. No, we're apart from the. But the Canaan Beach ordinance, which we just saw, required those to be off a 10 and that would probably solve the problem. Holiday lighting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I know in our neighbors that there's some people that haven't been in town for, I don't know, maybe once or twice a year, but they have a lot of landscape lights illuminating a lot of different paths around basically all night. So it's, I mean, we're going to do. I have no idea, but they're on all the time.
One thing to think about also is if you're talking about different zones, we do have hotels at the end of Lanita and they may use those landscape lighting to direct late night people that check in at 10:30 at night. So you may run into a discrepancy there if you talk about the low voltage landscaping lights and a curfew.
So there's no zoning in this in the STR, obviously.
Yeah, we're just looking citywide. I'm looking for light source, whether it's low voltage, high voltage. Does it trespass into somebody's house? If I'm looking at this beautiful landscape, low voltage light, it may be very bright, but it may not be trespassing into somebody else's house. That's what I'm going to be looking for.
Yeah, I think that's the point that if you're not familiar with low voltage lights, you need to look into it because they just don't extend that far. There's not enough power. So what you're saying, Mike, is it might go from me to you and that's about as far as it goes, just because it's if we're enacting something, you might want to look into the scientific basis for it.
Josh has a comment.
I think that's a little bit of input too. When it goes to the problem with curfews and the low voltage lights, a lot of those are, a lot of those low voltage lights are solar and they just turn off when they're out of power. So keep that in mind too, that when you're, when you're talking about a curfew, if you've got solar lights throughout your yard, there's no way to turn those off unless you're going to go pull them out of your yard and put them in the garage.
But they should be shielded.
And they usually are.
Josh, so I agree with both Mike and Tip that I I'm sure that the Dark Sky Association, because they are a great group, would have an answer to do Christmas lights, do landscape lights? How do you, how do you do them? How does that work? And I would get the answer and then work it into the ordinance.
Yeah, well, what staff can do is do some follow up research on those two topics and come back with a recommendation at our next check in about this.
Also about a zone, I think the commercial zone.
And it seems like it would be huge if the, thank you for coming.
Thanks, Michael.
Like it would be if we get the people to shade the street lamps. Neighborhoods are, I mean, that's the one that's outside our bedroom window. And someone did tell me that if I called them, they would come and put a shade around it.
Yeah.
So if we were to do that.
Yeah.
Will make a huge difference for people wanting to watch the stars.
Yeah.
So our next, is this something, Ms. Mon, that we could get by the next work session, do you think?
Yes.
I do. I'm hearing from council that. Everybody's.
Oh, you're not in September?
Yeah.
September?
Yeah. No, I'll add it. That certainly is, Jerry.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Let's get this on there and get this one moving.
So I just so I'm clear, staff will come back with, I think, a draft ordinance.
Okay.
And I think we'll do our research and come up with some recommendations for language, respect to Christmas lights, landscaping. Zones.
Yeah.
And then in the meantime, we'll actually reach out to PV and be able to provide some more update on that.
So the other question I looked up. Let me just finish this one. The other question I have about PUD is along Ocean Road. I know it's counting, but if we could get dark sky lights next to the ocean.
We can always ask nicely.
We can always ask. Oh, that would be.
They did it in Milwaukee when we implemented dark sky lighting. They came in eventually.
We have a hand up in the back. I can't. Who's behind you? Oh, Catherine, yes. Who recognizes Catherine?
Before the actual work session on this, just a couple of things. Could you be ready to address public safety for walkers? It's amazing. I'm not a very early to bed person. Some people are out walking. They're dark here every once in a while. We're concerned about safety of people. We have no sidewalks. It's the road. It's this. We've had an increase in wildlife, which I never thought I'd be standing in a council meeting saying as many people have expressed concerns about cougars, bears, lions and tigers for all I know. And some are changing lights on now in the hopes of deterring some of that wildlife. I don't know if that's a to our earlier comment we started with, I don't know if that's a fact. I don't know if that's a rumor. I don't know what it is. But if you could address that. And the other thing is I don't want to make a personal plea for Christmas lighting. Most of us who are here in January and February and March, I have chosen to leave lights on all night. They seem to be like a glue in the bark. It actually are to people at a very interesting time of year here and they represent something as well. And I don't know what the winter garden will be doing, but I also would appreciate thinking about them as a member of the community and the lighting that they've done. It's been beautiful with the holidays and has really affected the way it feels to come into town. So if you can just sort all that out.
No problem.
It's not based on neighbors not being able to agree on stuff. The worst way to make ordinance. The short term people who put a lot of work into that.
Thank you. We have a good base spring, I think, here. And Joe, you have more last?
Yeah, just one last thing. PV has lovely grants for projects like that. Also, Heinrich put in Angela lights in all of their streetlights, which really it still gives you the, you can still see and it still lets you walk. So it's just not, it's softer, it's not as tight.
Right.
And PUD can do that as well. It's just when they change out the light bulbs, they put in orange ones. Instead of white.
Sodium. Yeah, those are delightful. And I've been in some cities where the whole city at night is sodium and it's marvelous. You can see this, you can see the stars. So we've got that for September. Good.
Is there a date on that? Sorry, Dan.
Thank you, Sergeant Sims and Max.
Okay, thank you.
Really good job.
Very nice. Thank you, Brad. Anything can happen. I think next on, and actually it's the last item on our new business, is Dan back with us? Dan is with us for. Dan, are you there?
I'm here.
I, you know, I had this thought that if you ran for council position, we could just have you all the time.
I don't think so.
I know my wheelhouse, wheelhouse is.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you for being, thank you for being here tonight, giving us your time.
Yeah, so I'm here to talk about some dealings that are going on with us and our essentially sister city, the city of Nahalum. So some folks have heard the city of Nahalum is at a level two for water conservation. This is because they are a surface source and their surface source is running a little bit low on water. So they are not in any grand emergency yet, but like all water operators, we hope for the best and always, always plan for the worst. So part of that is the city council of Nahalum on Thursday requested their essentially their city manager and their public works and legal council to start deriving a MOU for our emergency water intertie, which is a good thing. My boss will tell you, me left and right, and tell everybody agreements in writing are the best way versus handshakes. And I full heartedly agree. So we do have a emergency water connection with the city of Nahalum that's established along Highway 101. And this connection is very old and actually has a broken valve. And it's both sides of this connection are asbestos concrete. So as we all know, asbestos concrete is not good. So about a year ago, the city in Nahalum, myself kind of looked at essentially changing location of this intertie and updating it so it's a usable intertie. And so we started that process, like I said, about a year ago. Well, because of the current conditions, they are trying to, essentially they want to speed up the project. And so with this, they are looking at moving the emergency intertie to back on another part of our system. It's over by the glade. And for them, they have water made that comes up close to us. So it's an ideal location. We don't have to deal with Highway 101 with traffic issues with ODOT. It actually sets up, sets us up for a, when we do a phase two of our water replacement. So it's all around a good thing. But we aren't fully budgeted to do a great big project. And so the project we are looking at doing, a lot of materials we actually have between the two cities. So there's not going to be a lot of expense. The city of Nahalum is picking up the expenses right now of getting the MOU in place. And when I say in place, meaning they're going to bring a draft to essentially the city of Manzanita for us to go over. And this MOU will talk about help define what an emergency is, how costs will be absorbed for the construction, also how costs are for if water has to go from one water system to the other water system. So what emergency enter ties to are not something that we just turn on and off. They are something that's required to contact the state of Oregon drinking water program and say, hey, we have a water emergency. And so that essentially starts a thing with the state as well, saying, okay, here are the, get some guidelines, some rules. And it's all under the official umbrella. They're not right now, and I want to stress this, they are not looking at trying to purchase bulk water from us on an ongoing basis. And if we get some rain in the near future, that will help them out a ton. So like I said, they're not to critical level, but this isn't an emergency prepared thing. So one of the things I'm asking tonight is essentially from city council is to authorize essentially the city manager and myself to work with the city in Nahalum to develop a plan to relocate this connection. And this is part of also helping develop the MOU and IGA. Once we kind of work with them and get that squared away with the information in it, then that the MOU and IGA will come before the council for final approval. So I, I, once again, I want to stress, this is a mutual project, meaning that if something happened to our distribution system, this inner tie would allow water to come back also into our system if we needed it or essentially go to them. I'm going to go on a little bit of a limb and say more than likely it's, we are in really, really good shape with our water source. So I think if it ever got used, it would be going one other direction, not towards us. So is there any questions I can answer on on this inner tie?
Dan, I got a question. Did you say it was less expensive to do the new tie than it is to repair the old tie?
Yeah. Anytime you are doing work in the Oregon Department of Transportation's right of ways, things are very, very, very expensive.
And secondly, is there some kind of meter or is there some, some way we know? Do we have a meter now?
Right now, there is no meter in the old, the old setup that's there. The new setup, yes, there will be actually a four inch meter that will be installed. We actually have had a meter sitting in the water treatment plant that would have been going into the Highway 101 project if we're, or portion, if we ever did get that far. So is part of this is we will both be contributing materials, which really lowers the cost of this project.
I had a question, Dan, the MOU you're talking about, that's the memorandum of understanding, right? And your IGA is the intergovernmental agreement.
Yes.
Right. What is your, one or the other? Okay, just for clarification. And what's your timeframe goal on, on getting this MOU pulled together between the two cities?
Honestly, it's at the pace of what city in Nahalum wants to kind of try to put it at. For us, we're going to send it to legal review. So there's going to be a timeline. And so they are going to help, they're going to be picking up some of that costs. And so if they're going to try to expedite it, that's going to be something they're going to have to work with Leila on, on, as far as expediting it. But I don't see them, and talking with their water operator, I don't see this like being a problem for them in the immediate future. So it's just something we want to get in place. So I'm hoping they will have an MOU to us for review in the next week or two is what I'm hearing. And then if it flip over, it'll probably be brought up. Correct me if I'm wrong, Leila, probably at the next council meeting, if they get it to us in the next couple of weeks for review or within the next week for review.
It just depends. It either be September, October. I'd say October is safe. It just depends on the extent of what's proposed and how long it takes legal to review. And they'll propose terms. We need to review those terms, determine if those terms are beneficial to us. And so there may be some countering that takes place. So I would say October would be a fairly quick turnaround. My guess is it'll, I think it probably should be an IGA. It's a little bit more binding than an MOU.
Yeah.
Does it have a start and stop date?
Well, we won't start construction or work on the project till it's signed.
Right, but I mean, once, once it's signed.
Yeah.
Oh. Is there, is there an expiration date on this thing?
Usually MOUs do have timeframes built into them. And so that will be one of the, one of the conditions that's in there that we'll want to look at. So you have any thoughts on that?
I just have a question about IDAs in these MOUs. When we're telling them, it seems like we do them for each specific service or project or whatever, they're not, they're not overriding agreement. They're just not a comprehensive agreement. They're specific to projects or.
Typically, so say, for example, if we had a number of water issues with the city of Nahalum, we might have one IGA that governs all of them. But we don't have, we do have another issue we're working on with the city of Nahalum related to the water line replacement they're doing at Anderson Creek. So there could be some efficiencies in having sort of a consolidated IGA. But in this case, I think timing is of the essence and so we want to get this IGA written. What we can do is if it's more efficient, we can amend that IGA to include other provisions with respect to other aspects of the water system itself. But typically, at least in this instance, the agreements really are specific to a certain relationship or transactional relationship that's happening between two cities. So kind of having them separately is beneficial.
Because we have one for the police services, I think.
Yeah, so we would actually want those separate. So like, you know, Eric and I are going to start renegotiating that IGA. I want to keep that separate from this IGA. That's a great point, but we have separate IDAs with the city of Wheeler and the city of Nahalum.
And the State Park.
And the State Park, yeah. We don't have one with all of them because they're all separate governmental entities. And we provide a specific service to each one of them.
Okay, so I have a question for Dan. I think it's really important that the community understand that this does not affect our water distribution, right? Our water distribution comes from the wells at which we have found to be much more cost efficient than going through surface water. This is really helping out Nahalum in this process when they are actually constructing pipes on our land.
Do you want to hit that?
Yeah, so this is, this is an emergency connection. Say, for some reason, say we had, had the water treatment plant fail. This would be something that we would be able to supply them with water and vice versa. But this isn't a bulk water sale type of thing.
And if it were, we would have specific costs. There would be a.
And that's part of what we want to negotiate in this IGA is what is an emergency?
Right.
First, right. And then what is the cost if we do release water? And so they have to kind of meet those two conditions and there's state guidance to the drinking water system that we will need to follow. So if there's, say, maybe just sort of a reckless use of water, that doesn't really constitute an emergency.
Water the way it is right now, I mean, and particularly in Nahalum, I think we're all right, but.
We're fine.
We are fine. And that's, I do stress that point because I've already had people ask. We are not in any type of water conservation. And had to activate that plan. Our wells are very, very sitting well. No pun intended, but they are doing well. And so I will still restate the fact with our water system, the way it's designed, it's, it's point of construction area and stuff when they did it all. When the Nahalum River drops to near disappearing, then I'm going to start, myself start to worry. A lot, a lot, and I say this again, a lot of pre-planning went into the construction of those wells way back. A lot, a lot, and I say this again, a lot of pre-planning went into the construction of those wells way back in the day. And that's why we're sitting in a really good position. Um, off the top of my head, I want to say, according to the master water plan, our capable flow that we can do from the wells puts us out, I wanted to say around 2040 or 2035 or something for where we are built out to. So. We have a long way to go.
And we can add additional wells, is that right?
Yes, the actual site was, um, designed and approved for 12, uh, well points to go in. We only have put in two of the 12.
Right, right.
The site, it was done that way was because originally, when the site was, or when that was all being done, all the entities in North County were part of, of the, essentially a group that was going to put those wells in. All of the other members dropped out except for the city of Manzanita, um, what's, uh, Route 53 Water and the city of Wheeler. And that's why we have federal funding to pay for the wells to be put in and all the infrastructure from the well site to the cities.
Okay. Uh, Dan, I'm curious, is this the first time that, I mean, Nahalum's probably had low water before. Am, am I right?
Yeah, they have had a couple of, of, uh, concerning years. This year, um, has been very concerning to the coastal area. Um, I guess the best way I can say it is, you know, this time of year, our average, if you take the last three months of water average, we should be sitting at about 9.68 inches. We're sitting at 2.64 inches of rain. So we are seeing a deficit. And so now rain can come back early and they'll be sitting in just fine shape. It happened a couple of years back, they got into a level one, uh, water conservation level. I think this is probably the first time they've ever gone to a level two. And so by that, when a, a level two is in place, that means that essentially folks are, are notified saying there is a problem, and they are asking folks to conserve water. It's not enforcement. If they do go to a level three, they will actually do, uh, enforcement. So don't water or you get ticketed.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the floor? Any, anyone out there? All right, well, we always appreciate your time. And your clear definitions and, uh, keeping us posted. So you're looking for the council to authorize the city manager and the public works department to negotiate an I G A with Nahalum. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, does everybody agree here? Do we, do we have to vote?
Why not?
Okay. I have a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Do I have the second? Second by Jerry. And, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. So let the record show that you are authorized to begin negotiations.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, appreciate your time.
Dan Lee, can I ask a quick question or a comment?
Got it.
Um, thank you for turning on the drinking fountain, stand by the visitor sign. I know it was turned on recently, however, that's a little problem because it runs continuously. I walked by last night and the drinking fountain was on, I couldn't turn it off. I went by this morning and it was still running.
I got notified of that issue this afternoon.
Okay, great.
And we are working on that right now.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
It's a ton.
Yeah, right.
It's, it runs bubblers all year round, so.
Thank you.
Cycle the water back up.
Yeah. Thank you, Dan.
Uh, before we close, uh, is there anything you needed to add this month?
I'm good, thank you.
Um,